We have returned from closed session. I have the following disclosures. By a four to zero vote, with Councilmember Rod Brewer absent, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney’s Office to defend the case of Mitchell versus the City of Elk Grove and all, as identified by the case number listed on the City Council agenda. Secondly, by a four to zero vote, with Councilmember Brewer absent, the City Council authorized the City Attorney’s Office to initiate litigation in one matter. The name of the defendants and details are not subject to disclosure at this time. Once litigation is filed, this information will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. With that, we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:14 PM. And that takes us to our regular meeting. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, January the 22nd, 2025. The time is 6:14 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight’s meeting replays will be on Friday, January 24th at 1:00 PM and Wednesday, January 29th at 9:00 AM on Metro Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this and previous meetings can be viewed on demand at the www.eltgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or unmute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on a particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chambers, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the Agenda item. And with that, Mayor, I will then move into the roll call. And with the roll call, I’ll be starting with Councilmember Spees.
Present.
I will note that Councilmember Brewer is absent. Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robles.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Existing is our Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove’s first inhabitants, the Plain Meawocks, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since the time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria tribe, the only federalized-recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endure because of the bravery, resiliency, determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and their leaders.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. And if I can get Councilmember Suen to help lead us.
Okay. Ready to pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join us at this time for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. May I get a motion to approve the Agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Under Section 3, there are no closed sessions on the regular Agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements. And Item 4.1 is the Youth Commission Semiannual Update.
All right. Look at this great group.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Femi Omotesho, and I’m a Management Analyst with the City Managers’ Office. I have the privilege of serving as the Advisor to the Elk Grove Youth Commission. I want to begin by expressing my gratitude for the opportunity to work along with this incredible young people. Their dedication and enthusiasm are truly inspiring. I would also like to introduce Gabrielle Flynn.
Gabrielle, please.
Who is now a co-Advisor for the Commission.
Oh, congratulations.
Gabrielle has great energy and a huge passion for helping youth. We are lucky to have her.
Gabrielle, please introduce yourself.
Good morning and good evening. My name is Gabrielle Flynn. I am a Management Analyst with the Elk Grove Police Department. I want to say again, thank you for the opportunity, and so far, it’s been a wonderful year working with you, and I’m looking forward to many more years of great things.
Thanks. The Youth Commission is here tonight to present their biannual report, highlighting their achievements and ongoing projects. Before we dive in, I’d like to invite each one of them to briefly introduce themselves, starting with the chair.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Ngo, and I’m a senior at Pleasant Grove High School, and I am currently this year’s Chair for the Commission.
Hi, my name is Andres Guzman, and I attend Laguna Creek High School. I’m a junior, and I’m Commissioner.
Hello, my name is Abash Chadri. I attend Kusumnus Oaks High School, and I’m currently part of the Youth Commission.
Hi, I’m Pratham, and I’m a senior at Franklin High School, and I’m currently the Vice Chair.
Hi, my name is Adrian Barado. I’m a senior at Elk Grove High School, and I’m the Communications Officer.
Hi, my name is Mauro. I go to Harry Eddy Middle School. I’m in eighth grade, and I currently hold a position as Secretary.
Good evening. My name is Ohm. I’m a senior at Kusumnus Oaks High School, and I’m a Commission Member.
Good evening. My name is Manjat, and I’m a senior at Kusumnus Oaks High School. I serve as the Historian on the Youth Commission this year.
Good evening. My name is Kara Hughes, and I’m in 11th grade at Pleasant Grove, and I’m a Commissioner.
Good evening. I’m Addie Nelson. I’m 12th grade. I attend Elk Grove High School, and this year, I am the Youth Leader.
Thank you. So this year started with a strong commitment to growth and improvement. The Commissioners have embraced an always-improving mindset, and their report will showcase the remarkable progress that they have made. Now, I’ll turn the presentation over to our Chair, Lindsay. Please step forward, who will guide you through the highlights.
Thank you again, Mayor and City Council, for allowing us to be here today. We’re super excited to share all of our updates. And so far, the Commission year has been super successful. We’ve demonstrated a lot of practicalness and dedication, and we’ve completed two projects, which I will allow the other Commissioners to go into more detail about.
On August 7th, we had a Youth Commission Retreat where we discussed about our summer events and ideas for upcoming events. We had our City Clerk and City Manager come and greet us, and we had our City Clerk give us training on the Brown Act.
On October 26th, we met at City Hall, and us and other youth of Elk Grove, we met up and we had our trash cleanup. We cleaned trails and parts of Elk Grove, and I’d like to appreciate the support of our Vice Mayor and Councilmember. Thank you.
In October, we conducted the Elk Grove Youth Needs Assessment to provide an opportunity for youth to share their perspectives on what we need to do as the Youth Commission, as the representatives. And we had a successful survey, and I’ll let the next person tell you more about that, but it’s going to help us guide our planning for the future of the Youth Commission.
So, a few things we wanted to highlight from the results of our survey. We had 447 responses across many schools, which is pretty good. And overwhelmingly, the biggest issue is mental health, with most people, or with the average stress level of all the responses being 6.32 out of 10. So obviously, what we got from that was we need more mental health education and support programs.
So one of the events we’re doing this year is Path to Positivity, and it’s going to be on February 22nd. And basically, it’s going to be at Wacford as well, and it’s an event to help the youth’s mental health and wellbeing, to improve it. And there’ll be expert speakers and food, music games, and free resources.
So one of our events we’ve done for many years now is Family Fun Day. This year, we’re going to be holding it on April 19th. It’s going to be in Old Town Plaza, just like always. And Family Fun Day is a free event for families to come out and enjoy a bunch of different carnival games, free music. There’s always some great food trucks there. And this time, I think we’re also going to have some Zumba and Bollywood dance groups, so I’m sure that’s going to be great.
At the end of the year, as usual, any money left over from all of our events will go towards multiple scholarships rewarded to ex, oh, sorry, rewarded to the great students of Elk Grove.
In May, we plan to host a food drive, just like previous years. It’s planned to be during the first two weeks of May, approximately that time, and the drop-off locations will be at City Hall of Animal Shelter and District 56, like previous years.
So thank you so much for listening to our presentation. We appreciate your support, and we’re looking forward to the rest of this year. If you would like more information, you can visit our Youth Commission website and follow us on Instagram for more updates. We also hope that all of you guys are following our Instagram as well. And with that, we will conclude our presentation. Feel free to ask us any questions. Thank you.
Thank you all for that great presentation. I’m so proud of all of you. I know the future is bright. I can’t wait to see where your endeavors lead. So that survey, I think, was quite compelling information in there. Are you going to be sharing that with the school district? And if you’re, I would highly recommend it. I can reach out to you, Femi, and connect you with the school board president. It could be as much as just sharing the findings, because mental health, I do hear that from families and others when I’m out and about in the community. But since you have some good data, it is definitely worth sharing with the school board, who oversee the funding for providing those kinds of resources in all of the schools. So highly recommend that connection for your data results. Any other questions, comments? I’ll go to the left here.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also want to thank all of you for your service and interest in our community. You represent the youth in our city. And so, I agree with the Mayor. Thank you for doing the survey and investigating on what is meaningful to all of your demographic, the youth out there in our city, and look forward to this workshop that you have planned coming up. I also want to encourage you in following up on what the Mayor said about going to the school board. All of you represent the different high schools in the area, and I encourage you to, maybe, Femi, we could talk about it, but we can connect you to the principals, the individual high schools. You are known to those high schools, and being able to introduce yourselves as the Youth Commission and things like this survey and bringing information back to them, I think would be a great way for you to connect with your schools directly. So look forward to talking to you about that.
Vice Mayor.
The future is most certainly bright. I always say that because of you guys, we’ll definitely be out of a job in the next coming years, because you guys are just super bright. So, but wanted to say thank you for the presentation and continue doing the work. It’s awesome to see that positivity, to see that path to positivity. That’s super cool, and I can’t wait to see how many of your fellow classmates will go and participate in that. It’s a change that you can do locally. You don’t need policy for that, and you guys are already doing that, so continue making that impact. And I just wanted to, quick, Commissioner Lindsay, is that a Seesun sweater I see, or a shirt that I saw? So I’m a matador for life, so you’re now my favorite Commissioner. Just kidding.
Wow. Go Hornets. Councilmember Spees.
So first, Dr. Femi, as always, fantastic. I feel like this is, when we do this every six months, I feel like it’s kind of a family gathering, and every time I see the cousins and the, you know, growing up. You know, we see every six months or so, of course, out in the community, but my gosh, you’re all, you’re very, some, you’re folks to be very, very proud of, and we’re thrilled to see your growth, not just, you know, in height or whatever, but in terms of your maturity and your intelligence and your community awareness and your commitment. And so, thank you very much. We’re very proud of you, so thank you.
Round of applause, please. Thank you again. We’ll see you all soon. All right, next item is Item 4.2, our new hire introductions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, Jason Bearman, your City Manager. Always pleased to be able to present all of our new employees. We have quite a few today to share with you. We also have a few promotions we’re proud to introduce. So I’m going to start with the Police Department.
Yes, get comfortable. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Bobby Davis. I am very fortunate enough to be the Chief of Police for the City of Elk Grove and the Elk Grove Police Department. We have 11 or 12 of our 24 that we would have announced today, but they have different shifts and unable to be here. So we will start with Garrick Arardo. Garrick was born and raised in the Bay Area prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department. He spent three years with the Galt Police Department, where we heavily recruited him, where he had the opportunity to serve as part of the traffic unit. And sorry to Brian Kalanowski from there, but we got one of your good ones. And go on, dude, welcome, sir.
Yep.
Congratulations. I don’t know, do we, you want them over there after, or are we sitting here? Yeah. Okay. Police records tech, Nicole Grema. Nicole was born in Mountain View, and her family moved to Roseville when she was a child. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, she worked in the insurance world for approximately 10 years before coming to stay-at-home mom in 2013, and welcome to our organization. Dispatcher, Supervisor Courtney Rosso. Courtney was born and raised in Sacramento. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, she worked as a dispatch supervisor in El Dorado, at the El Dorado County Sheriff’s Department. And one note, she also has another family member as part of our organization, and Brian Aruso is one of our detectives. So welcome. See you, sir. Marion Permasin. Marion was born in Sacramento and was raised in Elk Grove. She graduated Laguna Creek High School in 2020 and earned her Bachelor’s Degree in Criminal Justice from CSU this past December. She is a brand-new CSL. Welcome. Record supervisor, Aaron Hill, promoted on October 20th. Aaron joined the Elk Grove Police Department on June 11th, 2017. Prior to her promotion, she was responsible for training new hires as a records tech.
Two.
Dispatch supervisor, Kelly Archer. Kelly joined the Elk Grove Police Department on June 29th, 2015. Prior to her promotion, she was working as a Communications Training Officer in dispatch and catch-all, does everything for us. Congratulations. Officer Mateen Niazzi promoted October 22nd. I got you next, Hummerine. Mateen was born in West Sacramento and raised in Elk Grove. He graduated from Franklin High School, joined Elk Grove PD as a recruit on April 8th, 2024. He graduated the Sheriff’s Academy on October 21st. Mateen is currently in field training. Welcome. Officer Hummerine Carr. I thought you were getting skipped. Hummerine joined the Elk Grove Police Department as a CSL on February 27th, 2022. She graduated the Sacramento County Sheriff’s Academy on October 21st and is currently in field training. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Officer Edwin Martinez. Edwin joined the Elk Grove Police Department as a CSL on April 24th, 2020. He graduated the Sheriff’s Academy on October 21st, 2024, and is currently in field training. Congratulations to you. Officer Tristan Klingberg. Tristan was raised in Colorado, earned his Bachelor’s Degree at the University of Colorado Boulder. He joined the Elk Grove PD as a recruit on June 17th, 2024, and graduated the Delta Academy this past November. Tristan is currently in field training. Congratulations to you. Officer Priscilla Estrada. How are you?
Good.
Good. Priscilla was born in Stockton and raised in Lodi. She joined the Elk Grove Police Department as a recruit on August 25th, 2024, and graduated the Delta College Academy this past November. Priscilla is currently in field training. Congratulations. Yep. Fun. Liliana. Officer Liliana Serta. Liliana was raised in Santa Maria and earned her Bachelor’s Degree from CSU, where she was part of the Lex Program, which is a great program. Yes. She joined Elk Grove PD as a recruit on May 6th, 2024, and graduated the Delta College Academy this past December. Liliana is currently in field training. And for those who don’t know, Sac State has a very robust criminal justice program, and the Lex Program allows us to contact the students at the end or middle of their junior year. When they graduate, they have a job. They go straight into the academy from the agency that has picked them up. And we were participating in that program for the last several years now, and we’ve had a couple of our new recruits come from that program. So thank you so much. They come out with a degree? I think that’s it for me.
That’s it?
Yeah. All right.
All right. I know you’ve all met our new Assistant City Manager, Jackie Guzman, but I wanted to officially introduce her and welcome. Jackie comes to us with lots of experience in local government, having served with the cities of San Jose, Cupertino, and Sunnyvale, the last two specifically serving as Deputy City Manager. She’s overseeing our finance, IT, and HR departments, and has hit the ground running. We’re excited to have her. Looking forward to many years together doing some great things, working with the City Council and the staff here for the City of Elk Grove. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Kristin Lawrence, your Public Affairs Manager, and I’m here tonight and pleased to introduce Sidney Robertson, our new Communications and Marketing Specialist in the Public Affairs Office. Sidney brings a strong background in marketing and public relations with experience in both the public and private sectors, most recently with the Yuba County Department of Health and Human Services. Sidney will be leading our social media efforts showcasing the many exciting events and initiatives happening throughout the city. And outside of work, Sidney is an avid reader, a big-time foodie, and some might even say chronically online, staying connected to the latest social media trends and insights. Please join me in welcoming Sidney to our team.
All right, I’m going to invite Kara Taylor Seaman to come up. She’s our Finance Manager. Matt Pollan is out of town tonight, so she’s going to introduce our new employee in our Finance Department.
Good evening. I am happy to introduce Cindy Tiffany to our Finance Department. Cindy is born and raised, native of Salinas, and has graduated Cal Poly in San Luis Obispo. She has spent the last 10 years actually working on land financing and doing special tax districts, which is exactly what, why she’s such a great fit and a great hire for us. So she’s lived here in the City of Elk Grove. She lives here with her family, her husband, and two children, and we are very, very happy to welcome Cindy to the city.
Good to see you, Cindy.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Christopher Jordan, Community Development Director. Welcoming two new members to our team. First is Sue Vang, Code Enforcement Officer. Come on up. Sue lives in Elk Grove with his wife and kids. From 2010 to 2022, he worked as a Community Service Specialist with the Police Department at CSU Sacramento. Started his career as a Code Enforcement Officer with the City of Sacramento for about two and a half years or so. Recently joined us. He’s a certified Code Enforcement Officer, and in his free time, enjoys traveling and spending time with his family. Welcome aboard. Second new hire in Community Development is Jason Hohn, our Assistant Director, focusing on the Development Services side. Joins us from the City of Sacramento, where he oversaw the project management team within their Community Development Department. Masters of Public Administration from a university down south. He values opportunities. You didn’t put it on the list, so I’m going off of memory. San Bernardino, thank you. He values opportunities for his staff to collaborate with developers on high-quality-built environment while enhancing livability and the city’s economic growth. In his free time, he enjoys getting outdoors with his children, snowboarding, motorcycle rides in the Delta, and rowing crew with the River City Rowing Club. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I’m Jeff Warner, proud to be our city’s Public Works Director. We also have two new hires for you this evening. First up is Fabiola Vasquez. Fabiola joined the Traffic Engineering Division in Public Works in December as an Assistant Engineer. She has a background in various engineering and construction roles. Before coming to the city, she worked with the City of Yuba City and Flatiron Construction. And during her free time, she enjoys photography, traveling, and trying new restaurants. Welcome, Fabiola.
Thank you.
Next up is Songin Wu, and Songin may look familiar to you. He was here about a year ago, and he’s already being promoted. So good for Songin. He joined our CIP group late in 2023 as an Assistant Engineer, and he was recently promoted to the position of Associate Civil Engineer after passing the necessary exams and receiving his registration as a professional civil engineer. Congratulations. Songin has eight years of engineering experience, performing design, construction management, and project management of public works projects. Outside of work, Songin enjoys spending time with his family, working on house projects and gardening. Congratulations, Songin. Thank you.
All right. Well, congratulations to all our new hires and promotions. Let’s give them all another round of applause. All right, excellent, excellent. Next up is our Public Comment. And I will go ahead and open up Public Comment. I do not have anyone signed up to speak. I will go ahead and close the Public Comment opportunity and turn it over to the City Manager for the report.
Great. Good evening again. A few items to report on this evening for the council and the public. First is the City Council and staff will be participating in Strategic Planning Work Session on February 20th at District 56. And we do this every two years. It’s from 9:00 to 4:00 o’clock. During this time, council members will discuss key issues and set goals and priorities for the next two fiscal years. Executive Team members will also participate, provide strategic planning input. This is a public meeting. Members of the public are invited to attend and weigh in on the issues of the Agenda. Lots of applications that are open right now. We have Elk Grove 101 that’s open until February 3rd. We have our Police Department Citizens Academy. The application period is open through February 4th. We have our Arts and Creative Economy Commission that’s open until February 5th. We have our nonprofit grant annual process that’s underway, and those applications are due February 11th. And then we have the Stars of Service Volunteer Awards. Those nominations are due on February 28th. I think that’s all the nominations, all the applications we have. Many of our residents are going to be celebrating the Lunar New Year later this month. This year will be the year of the snake. The city is pleased to once again support the NorCal Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce in hosting the Lunar New Year Festival February 1st and 2nd at Elk Grove Park. From lion and dragon dances to delicious food and camaraderie with other community members, this free event offers another chance to celebrate our diversity. Details can be found on the city’s social media accounts. And finally, the city is currently developing its 2025 to 30 Consolidated Plan, which sets forth goals and strategies for using approximately 6.5 million in CDBG and Home Investment Partnership Program funding. Over that five-year period, the public is invited to attend a meeting to provide input on February 4th this year from 6:00 to 7:30 at District 56. To register and/or find more information, To register and/or find more information, visit elkgrovecity.org/cdbg. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council has.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next item. Thank you for your report, sir. Next up is our Consent Calendar Items. At this time, I will open up Public Comment. I do not have anyone sign up to speak on closed session, or our Consent Calendar Items, so I will close Public Comment and look for a motion.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I'll take us to Section Eight, our Public Hearing, and that is Item eight-point-one, which is a public hearing to consider resolution adopting amendments to Elk Grove General Plan and an ordinance approving revisions to the Elk Grove Municipal Code related to flood damage prevention and floodplain allowances for public improvements and non-habitable structures.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Sarah Kirschgessner, Planning. The proposed amendments are text amendments that would provide exceptions to allow for the construction of non-habitable structures and public infrastructure within the one-hundred-year floodplain in certain cases. The amendments consist of revisions to Title sixteen, Building in Construction, and Title twenty-three zoning of the Elk Grove Municipal Code, as well as concurrent revisions to the city's general plan. The need for the proposed amendments was identified while reviewing analysis for a recent capital improvement project, which, that was unable to meet the current regulations pursuant to the municipal code. No increase in water surface elevation is allowed. According to FEMA's definitions, no increase means zero feet. The hydraulic model used to calculate water surface elevation is developed with assumptions that could easily affect its accuracy, so it's not reliably accurate within one hundred of a foot. City staff reviewed municipal codes from other agencies in the region to see how they regulate elevation increases. Most of those agencies limit water surface elevations increases to one foot. Given the level of accuracy of modeling and the policies of neighboring agencies, staff determined that the current policies and regulations are too restrictive. During this review, staff also determined that there was a clerical error in the general plan flood policies related to non-habitable structures that needed to be updated to reinstate previously adopted policies that were inadvertently deleted. The Planning Commission reviewed the item on December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and no public comments were received. The Planning Commission recommended City Council of the amendments five to zero. The general plan amendments would amend policies ER two-six and ER two-sixteen to allow for the development of non-habitable structures and infrastructure, such as trails, non-habitable and structures and public infrastructure, and similar facilities within the one-hundred-year floodplain on a case-by-case basis. These exceptions are very limited. They must result in no net increase to the water surface elevation adjacent to downstream and upstream of the development as determined by the city. The changes would also add a definition of habitable and non-habitable structures to the general plan. The municipal codes would adopt those same provisions, allowing the floodplain administrator to permit the approval of bridges, trails, drainage, and non-habitable maintenance facilities if such improvements involve no more than one-tenth of a foot of water surface elevation increase within open space or other approved undeveloped areas. It must be within a floodplain easement or other protected instrument, and the physical and economic use of upstream and downstream property will not be adversely affected. The amendments would also revise and add definitions of habitable and non-habitable to be internally consistent within the municipal code. No further environmental review is required under state secret guidelines. The amendments are consistent with the analysis of the two thousand and nineteen General Plan EIR. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the project, adopt a resolution, finding no further environmental review is necessary, and amending the Elk Grove General Plan and adopting an ordinance amending the Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen fifty and Chapter twenty-three one hundred. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
All right, thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up Public Comment Opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak on this. I'll close the Public Comment Opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments on this item?
Nope.
Can I see?
I'd like to make a motion. Go ahead.
I got a simple and quick one. I got to ask it. It seems like it would be a no-brainer. What is the definition of a non-habitable building?
I can pull up the definition as we...
Yeah, that would be good. I mean, I just, I mean, I would, I would think it would be something like a garden shed or something to that effect, but just for the clarification for everyone, what is a non-habitable building?
So, per the definition, as shown on the staff report, page ten, it's any structure that is designed to be, excuse me, non-habitable, you said? Not habitable.
Non-habitable.
Non-habitable, buildings and/or structures of an accessory character, including but not limited to agricultural buildings, aircraft hangars, barns, no sleeping quarters allowed within, carports, fences, grain silos, greenhouses, livestock shelters, private garages with no sleeping quarters allowed, retaining walls, sheds, stable swimming pools, tanks, and towers.
Perfect. Thank you.
Second.
I didn't make the motion yet.
Do we get a motion?
I'll move. I was about to make the motion to adopt the resolution and introduce the ordinance.
Now I second.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I'll take us to Section Nine, the Regular Agenda Action Items and Recommendations. And the first is Item nine-point-one, which consider resolution approving the artwork for the Elk Grove Library and authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract with the artist.
Members of the City Council, my name is Kara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. I'm here to talk about the Elk Grove Library Public Artwork Design Approval. As you know, the city has a percent for the arts program that was established in two thousand and sixteen. The program allocates two percent of construction costs for public art projects. In October, two thousand and twenty-three, the City Council approved the Elk Grove Library Relocation Project, and the library project falls under the percent for the arts program. I'll give you a quick overview. The project is the former Wright-Ade Building at the southwest corner of Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman Road. The artwork budget is a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and the artwork goals are to engage library visitors, mark the library entrance, be accessible to people of all ages, and consider the library goal, which is to inspire our communities to discover, learn, and grow. There was an artwork selection review panel that was brought together. It included six individuals. Two of them are art commissioners, three of them are professional artists, and one is a representative from the library. I'm going to go over why this art selection process is a little bit different in the past. The review panel was brought together to review the proposals and narrow down to one artist, but in December, two thousand and twenty-four, the council passed a resolution dissolving the Arts Commission and establishing the Arts and Creative Economy Commission. So, that recruitment for that new commission is currently underway, and staff recommends approving the proposed artist and continuing the process to ensure the artwork is installed when the library opens. A little bit about the process, I mentioned the budget, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. It was an open call for artists. That was a nationwide call for artists. The RFQ was put out in spring of two thousand and twenty-four, and there were one hundred and eighteen applications received. Five artists were invited to present their conceptual designs to the review panel, and the proposal by Aaron Stephen was selected. Related to the artist recommendation, four of the six review panel members felt Mr. Stephen was the most qualified artist. There were some concerns from the library staff that the piece would get inquiries from the public, but the review panel felt that through education and signage, that could be alleviated. And the art commissioner stated they preferred a piece that was more a book directly related to literature or the more closely connected to Old Town. So, they did ask for outreach to the city's Historic Preservation Committee and the Old Town Foundation, which has been conducted. So, all panelists felt that Aaron Stephen, as an artist, is highly qualified, capable in, capable of designing, fabricating, and installing the artwork. So, I'm going to go ahead and invite up Shelley Willis, the city's Public Art Consultant, and she's going to talk about the artist and the artwork.
Mayor, council members, it's really great to be here tonight and talk with you about the artist and his proposed idea for the project. So, the artist is Aaron T. Stevens. As Kara said, he is highly qualified for the project. He divides his practice between a studio practice where he makes work for museums and galleries, more traditional exhibition spaces, but then he also has this really incredible public art practice. He's done more than two dozen public art projects across the country, including at the San Diego International Airport, the Tampa International Airport. He's worked at a hospital. This piece on the right that you're looking at right now is in Nashville, Tennessee, at the Music Center there. What his work, you know, generally his work really, which I love, he takes those ordinary objects that we're very, very familiar with, ladders and, you know, stones and, and in this case, lights, lamp posts, and he turns them into these extraordinary sculptures and installations. He has been awarded numerous awards and fellowships, including, he was a Louise Bourgeois Fellow and Artist-in-Resident at, in New York. He has, his work has been written about in numerous publications, in Forbes Magazine, Boston Globe, Washington Post. So, he also knows his way around construction, you know? He, he makes a lot of his own work. He knows about engineers, contractors, how to collaborate and get some of these works done. I mean, working in the public realm as an artist is very complex, as you might imagine, and artists are required, just like any other contractor, to, you know, make sure that their, their work is maintainable and, you know, structurally sound, et cetera. So, he's very, very qualified for this project. So, the site was already mentioned, the, the artist, we're all told, to create a work at the corner in front of this Wright-Ade, old Wright-Ade Building, and it's very, very accessible by a car. You know, this work is going to be seen a lot by traffic. That, that corner is very, very active, but there will be people that walk past it too, you know, getting to the front door of the library. Maybe they'll, you know, be there to say, hey, Mom, you know, meet me at that sculpture. So, it's at that corner at an existing site that has, you know, already a plaza area there that's defined. There's a few photos, so you get a sense of scale of the piece. Right now, there's a, what was, I think, maybe a sign and a, and a decommissioned fountain and some, you know, brick hardscape and a little bit of landscape. So, this is the, the piece to the right, a rendering of the piece. It's titled Radiant Eddie, and Aaron titled it that as an acknowledgement to Harriet Eddie, who I'm sure all of you know and is beloved in this community. She played a major role in the development of libraries throughout California and beyond. She was the first female principal at Elk Grove High School and established the school's first library, which became the first county library branch in the state of California. So, she's well-beloved, and he really wanted to acknowledge that in this piece. So, the piece is made, and I'll show you some other renderings as well, but it's, it's, it's made with thirty streetlights, streetlights and poles and fixtures that resemble those that you might find, you know, in Old Town Elk Grove. The poles, they sort of start out very regimented and low to the ground, and they sweep up as the, the piece moves around, and then the piece sort of breaks apart. And I love this part of it because I think it really says something about growth and also being an individual. And, and as I said before, you know, he, he uses, Aaron uses these ordinary objects to allow access into the piece because everyone is familiar with these lamp posts, but then ask questions, you know, as you go. And I think that's one of the best characteristics of public art because a public art piece, unlike a museum or exhibition piece that's maybe seen once or twice, you know, by a member of the public, this is going to be seen over and over and over again, and I think it allows access into the idea of the piece, but also inspires questions and curiosity. And of course, curiosity and growth are, are big parts of what a library is all about. So, Aaron was really inspired by all of those things, and again, I'll show you a picture of it at night, but this piece is also meant to be a beacon, you know, at night and, and, you know, draw people to it and to the library. It's, I'm going to read you this quote that came from his artist statement. It says that radiant Eddie, so I think it's a beautiful quote, is, it literally illuminates, suggesting that the ordinary can become extraordinary, and in fact, that the ordinary itself is already extraordinary if we simply adjust our perspective. So, here's a couple of views at night and from a different perspective, and I like to always point out that this is a conceptual design, so there might be tweaks, you know? We talked with CJ about, you know, maybe the piece is oriented, you know, slightly shifted one way or the other to allow, you know, a different viewpoint from the street. So, you can see that, that this piece is interesting from lots of different perspectives. It's not something that you just look at and, you know, you don't have an inspiration to look at again. There's, there's ways of looking at it as you move around it. It's also, he also is proposing to put it onto a pedestal that's maybe, you know, twelve inches high or something like that to add a little height. He's hoping that they'll, you know, that we'll be able to put some landscaping around it to really sort of visually say, this is not, you're not supposed to go up on this pedestal and climb it and, you know, interact with it that way, that, that you're supposed to stay outside of that and, and observe it. This is another rendering. Again, you get a sense of scale, especially at the pedestrian level, and how it might look in front of the library from this viewpoint. That lamp post, the tallest lamp post, is twelve feet tall, and then it goes, you know, sweeps down. The, the top parts of the lamps are standard again, and they're about twelve inches tall and eight inches in diameter. And finally, if you look at the piece from above in that right-hand picture, you can see that it takes up most of that pedestal area, and that area, the diameter is about seventeen feet. So, it's quite large, and I, I really think it holds the site. And again, there it is in night view. So, at this point, we can answer any questions that you may have. We are asking you tonight, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the artwork for the library and authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract with the artist.
All right. Thank you for that excellent presentation. At this time, I will open up the Public Comment Opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak on nine-point-one, so I will close Public Comment, and we will start to the right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, it's, for me, it's always challenging with public art. I usually look at it and go, nah, uh-uh, nah. But I like this one. Nah, I mean, this one, I saw it. I, I kind of got a little bit of a verbal preview of what it was. I thought it might have been traffic lights, you know, but I, I saw it. I like it. I'm, I'm supportive of it. Couple of things, though. So, I noticed in, in, on the last slide where there was the, the top-down view, it does appear as though there's an opportunity for pedestrians to enter. Oh, you, nope.
Oh, is that capacity?
You were, there you go, right there.
Oh, yeah.
So, the footing measures seventeen foot, seventeen-foot diameter. It does appear as though that it provides the, the, you know, a pedestrian to get into the structure, and actually, the way I look at it is I would kind of prefer them to have that ability to do so, because in today's day and age of the selfies and the, you know, if, if you've ever gone to those parties where they swing that camera around in front of you, right? I think this offers kind of an interesting opportunity for the observer to get involved or get into that, into that art piece. So, I guess if, if the purpose is to keep them out, you might want to close that gap. But I would actually suggest that you leave it just like that and perhaps even provide a pathway to there. But anyway, I'm not going to design for them. I like this as it is. I'm happy to support it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
No, thank you for, for the presentation. I really liked the setup, how it's positioned, but more important, it's a beautiful landmark that goes into, to the new library structure. It's a good opening for people as they come in from the rural area into the historic area to see this. It's a new attraction, but it's, it still has that feel, that look and feel of it. And for those who are going through the historic area and going out into the rural area, this is a nice look, a very nice look. And so, I definitely want to thank the Art Selection Panel for, for, for this and, and for them to make this decision, because it's one of those, it's one of these cool things where you are creating this bridge of historic Elk Grove and today's Elk Grove is very complimentary. As a matter of fact, it's one of those things where councilmember's speech brought up a really, really fun thing. It's like you do a grand opening for the, for, for the new library when that happens that you could do as part of it, have people sit in a little circle. you could do as part of it, have people sit in a little circle and do the little round thing because not only will it make you dizzy and have a bad case of vertigo, but it definitely makes one of these attractions that really makes going to the library, but really coming into Elk Grove a really cool experience. So, thank you again. This is really nice.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I do like this piece. It's just, it's very clean, simple. I love, I love the quote and the inspiration behind it. So, I definitely, and I'm sure you will, having that prominently displayed and explaining how that, what the intent is, I think it's very appropriate, yeah. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo the same sentiments as my councilmembers. This is amazing. I think of the urban lights in LA as we see this on the corner. And like Councilmember Spees says, just photo, people taking photos. It gets me thinking like, okay, there's going to be different areas where folks can be like, "Where in Elk Grove am I?" Right? Take a selfie, take a snapshot, and just do something really cool around the arts. So, super excited and ready to support this and make the motion.
Excellent. And I love this. I'm so excited about it, and I really appreciate that we raised the bar from books to public art, which we so sorely need in Elk Grove. So, this is just a wonderful community asset. I do have, and I really love the name, that historical connection to somebody who's transformed education in our community. I really appreciate that. I think that that was very clever, cleverly integrated into the historical area. So, thank you for all of that. Just two quick questions. Who was on the review panel? I didn't see that on the slide.
Oh, yes. Let me just turn to that. There were six members, two members from the Arts Commission, Sally Gettrich and Liz Irons, Gail Hart, Robert Orton.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah. So, three professional artists, a library representative, and two members of the Arts Commission.
Okay, perfect. And then last, light pollution. Have any concerns? Will that factor in maybe the angle in terms of, I don't know if it's going to impact any neighborhoods, probably not. But just as we think about that and how it's going to be laid out, obviously, we don't want any intrusions for drivers and so forth. So, just, you know, something to think about.
Yeah, that came up at the meeting with Historic Preservation Committee. So, that's something that as we do the final site design and as the lighting element is determined, we will certainly consider that to see, will it have the functionality like the light over at D56 does, the piece at D56?
Yeah, right.
So, we'll certainly consider that in the final process.
No, this is beautiful, so very excited to see it installed. So, with that, I will look for a motion for this.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
That'll be item 9.2, which should receive an update on the new zoo at Elk Grove project regarding design status, leadership changes at the Sacramento Zoological Society, fundraising efforts in the facility naming process, and I consider a resolution establishing the name of the facility and provide additional direction as appropriate.
All right, you guys ready? All right, good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Sam Grimm, Senior Civil Engineer in Public Works. I'm very excited tonight to present the first part of our zoo update covering design progress since last June, and Kara is going to cover our remaining items on the agenda. So, I'll cover design phasing, share updated renderings and exhibits, and touch briefly on off-site infrastructure and schedule. To get us all oriented, we have here the location of the new zoo on the map in red. For the rest of the maps you see in the presentation, will be rotated 90 degrees to the right, clockwise. So, on the map here, we have Shed C to the right, which is now north, Lots Parkway on the bottom, Classical Way on the left, with Camera Road a little bit further to the left off the page, and B Drive at the top. The onsite design team has been hard at work advancing the new zoo from a conceptual design level to the next step. We call this next step "design development." It represents approximately a 65% design level. In addition to this collections, this collection of renderings and exhibits I have for you tonight, our team has been hard at work on all the details, the civil work, exhibitory, structural, architectural, fire protection, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, lighting, technology, life support systems, and wetlands. A lot of work. Now, everything in color here represents all of the onsite work for Phases 1A and 1B. Now, this site is too large to advance the design at one time. So, we have split this design up, or we have split the site up into sub-phases. And what you're going to see tonight is progress from these two sub-phases. And first up, the giraffe zone. The giraffe zone here includes the Lodge Restaurant. I'll be putting up little circles to guide us as we go through the figures here. The Lodge Restaurant, the Games Area, and Events Pavilion, the West Savannah, a large watering hole, and the care quarter facilities for the giraffe and the other hoof stock. Moving into some renderings, this is from the front sidewalk looking at the restaurant entry. You'll notice the thematic pavement patterns guiding you to the front door with a natural wood handle. There are plenty of seating options to hang out outside while you wait for your table. Stepping inside to the reception area, the restaurant is designed for both non-ticketed and ticketed guests. You can simply park your car, enter through the front door without a zoo ticket. You can also enter from the zoo park at a side door here on the right-hand side with your ticket. The control point for handling those transactions is the reception desk here on the right. Now, further inside the restaurant, looking straight at the bar, you'll notice the center window that opens up and offers dual service for interior and exterior spaces, and it leads out to the Games Lawn Area and outdoor seating. There's also a large roll-up door on the left-hand side that can be opened up in fair weather. Turning around, you can see now the variety of seating options inside the restaurant. All the seating is designed to take advantage of the outstanding views out onto the West Savannah. This is from the far side of the restaurant. As parents, we all know it's important to know where the restrooms are. So, just behind this view, you turn around, that's where the restroom is to take the kids on. All right, now, just outside from that viewpoint, this is the exterior deck looking back towards the restaurant, offering weather-protected outdoor seating. All right, and if you're a curious giraffe, here's your view looking back at the deck seating right in the center of the picture. And just off to the left is the Games Area with the fire pit on the left. These giraffes get to enjoy their own watering hole with functional wetlands, so they're still having fun. And speaking of the Games Area, here's a view from the fire pit looking back towards the restaurant with the interior and exterior bar. And there are a lot of seating opportunities outside for eating or drinks and games, also with lots of shade trees. Moving on to the Events Pavilion, it's a space designed for public events, parties, weddings, ceremonies, and company functions. Here is a separate entrance from the parking lot with similar thematic paving patterns to guide you in. Once you're inside, you can gather around this pre-function space and grab a snack. And further in, here's the covered event space. Off back on the left, you can see the doors to dedicated restrooms and multi-function rooms that can be used for pre-wedding, party prep, or breakout meeting spaces. All right, now, moving on to the area we call the Entry Zone. This area includes the main entry, the education entry, dwarf mongoose, the East Savannah, the giraffe feeding shelter, and our flamingo exhibit. It includes some more, but we'll get to that here in a minute. You'll notice I skipped the front entry slide. I'm saving that for Kara as it includes the proposed zoo name, so Kara gets some design slides. This here is our education entry just off to the left of the main entrance. And here into the entry plaza looking back, this is the retail shop and the coffee shop. Now, inside the gift shop is plenty of space for displaying merchandise, gifts, and numerous plush animals. Here is our coffee shop with plenty of interior seating and easy access to outdoor seating. And as you start your day in the zoo, the first exhibit you're going to come to is the dwarf mongoose. We're setting up their home to include play opportunities such as small trees, branches, and rocks. And due to their cute little size, we have elevated this exhibit to provide optimal viewing angles for everyone. And for reference, they're about the size of a football, if not a little bit smaller. Next up, we have the giraffe feeding shelter. It provides an opportunity to overlook the East Savannah and interact and feed, interact with the giraffes and feed them. This structure is supported by large natural logs and has a fast roof. All right, just past the giraffe feeding shelter, it brings us to the flamingo aviary. This is a large steel-supported mesh aviary where guests can walk inside and hang out with the flamingos and a variety of other bird species, including ink of terns. Now, entering the aviary, you can follow along the boardwalk and observe the flamingos playing in the pool and relaxing on the beach. This is a figure from one of our exhibit plans that shows different surfaces and elevations. Just off to the top of this page is an observation platform if you want to view the action from outside the aviary. Okay, so leaving flamingo brings us around to the last part of the Entry Zone. You'll notice flamingo there, kind of top center with the white arches. For the last part of the Entry Zone, we have the Okapi, Colobus, and African Aviary, a multi-part exhibit, a lot going on here. So, first, we have the Okapi. Now, they have two yards, first up, an open-air yard here on the right-hand side, and a second yard that they share inside the aviary. Inside the aviary, it'd be a variety of African bird species, including bee eaters. And right in the middle of all the action is the Colobus monkeys. Okay, here we can see the entry to the combined exhibit. The first story of this building is the dedicated entry vestibule for the aviary. So, you enter the first door, look to the left, and it offers direct views into the Colobus exhibit, pass through the second door, and you're inside the aviary. On the second story of this building is the care quarters for the Colobus. And now, you're inside the aviary looking back at the Colobus. And you'll note that this space is now shared with zoo guests, the mix of African bird species, and the Okapi who are hanging out just right behind us in their yard. All right, now, what's next for the design team? We've taken the two blue regions through design development. Next up, the Animal Care Center. Now, this area includes exhibits such as the Giant Tortoise, the Clip Springer, the Hyrax, Alligator, Squirrel Monkey, Gelada, Thick-billed Parrot, and Lemer. It's a lot to cover in our next presentation. As for the off-site infrastructure, we're currently reviewing 30% plans for roadways, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, utilities, and our storm drain basin. Here is an image depicting our progress on Classical Way with the roundabout configuration for safe and efficient access on and off of Camera Road. As for schedule, our design work will continue through the end of 2026 for both onsite and off-site work. We anticipate releasing our construction manager-at-risk solicitation next month and looking for award of that initial contract in May pending fundraising efforts. And we're still looking for a construction start in 2027. And I'd like to issue a special thanks to the entire design team for all the hard work in producing these images, and especially the society for helping us make that happen. So, thank you, and I'll hand it off to Kara.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. Kara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. I'm going to continue the balance of the presentation. So, first, I'd like to talk about a transition of the zoo leadership. As you're aware, last fall, Jason Jacobs, the Executive Director and CEO of the Sacramento Zoological Society resigned. The society appointed two individuals to fill that role, Mr. Robert Churchill as the interim executive director. Mr. Churchill has been a key figure in the zoo's operations for over a decade, and he has previously served as the interim director. And Mr. Kevin Bell to lead fundraising efforts. Mr. Bell is a renowned leader in the zoological community and was a former director of the Lincoln Park Zoo in Chicago. Transitioning to fundraising, the city and the society have fundraising milestones in the cost-sharing agreement that came before council in June. There are six milestones, and right now, we're on the second milestone, which was January 1 of 2025. And the society needed to account for $17.5 million as their minimum financial obligation. This was met and confirmed by the city through in-person review of their commitments. As a reminder, related to fundraising, the minimum financial obligation can be met in a variety of ways with cash contributions from third parties or the society, naming or sponsorship rights, and third-party in-kind material contributions. So, if any milestones are not met, the city can suspend design work and/or not issue any further task orders. The cost-sharing agreement also requires an operating agreement between the city and the zoo, and that is currently being worked on. Related to the zoo naming, the city, the society, and their partner Runyon Saltsman Inc. worked to develop naming options. They were brainstormed in a linear fashion, coming from hyperlocal to Sacramento regional, California geographic, and global themes. So, the names were presented to the city's ad hoc committee, the city's zoo ad hoc committee, which includes Mayor Singh Allen and Councilmember Brewer, as well as zoo representatives. Out of that meeting, the city's zoo ad hoc committee is recommending the following name, the Greater Sacramento Zoo at Elk Grove. I'd like to talk for a minute about the different components of the name. The greater really reflects the zoo's broad regional draw as a key attraction, and it emphasizes the overall increase in size and scale from 14 acres to an eventual 63 acres. Sacramento Zoo accounts for nostalgia with current and local patrons. It helps with continuity for donors. And at almost 100 years old, the zoo has been a cherished gem and destination for our region. At Elk Grove emphasizes the geographic location, celebrates the Elk Grove community, and underscores the city's investment. So, I get my design slides, Sam saved for me. Thank you. This is really meant to just pair the name with a main entrance concept at this point. It's not meant to be the exact color or font, but it's just really putting the Greater Sacramento Zoo at Elk Grove in the front of the building at the main entrance, so you could get a feel for what that might look like. The second design slide is really a retail interior, so you can see on the right-hand side, it would say the Greater Sacramento Zoo at Elk Grove along the wall space in this retail space. So, the ad hoc committee is recommending this name, and if it's approved by the full council, staff recommends adoption of a resolution naming the facility, the Greater Sacramento Zoo at Elk Grove, then logo branding and marketing concepts would be established. If the name is not approved, there are some alternative actions that the council could consider, including restarting the naming process internally, engaging a different consulting firm, conducting a community naming process, or deferring the naming decision. So, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the naming of the new zoo at Elk Grove as the Greater Sacramento Zoo at Elk Grove. So, I'm available for any questions, as well as Mr. Sam Grimm, and we have zoo representatives in the audience as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those presentations. At this time, we will go ahead and open up public comments. We have three people signed up to speak. We will start with Walt Hess, followed by Kathy Lee.
Good evening. I don't really have a statement, I just have a couple of questions, just for clarification. I'm Walt Hess, I live in Elk Grove, I live on Derby Way. I'm a volunteer at the zoo and have been for about 12 years now, I think. But I had two questions, one on the milestones for pledges and/or payments that are due to the, I understand the zoo hit their first one. Are those pledges and/or cash, or is it only cash in hand? That's my question number one. That really wasn't answered, I'm not clear on that, and your website wasn't clear on that to me. And my second question is more of an ask, also on your website sometime back, and it may still be there, I apologize if it is because I didn't... may still be there, I apologize if it is because I didn't look recently. There was a recap of pledges to date that only covered the first quarter of last year, January through April. So the last nine months of this last year plus this month are excluded. I wonder if that's going to be available to the public in the future too, because I think both of those give great insight and transparency to the project, which I know all of you know that I support 100%. I just need some clarification on those two points. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the city manager want, or Kara?
Yes. The pledges are a combination of cash, it's cash and pledges. And then, the sheet that he's referencing is attached to the city council staff report tonight, so we will put that up on the website, which is a listing of the pledges and the gifts. I believe that's what he's referencing, so that will go on the city's website after tonight.
Oh, I'm going to wait, but maybe I'm mishearing something, or maybe I've misheard something before, but let's go ahead.
Yeah. And then, did you have another question? Did you answer all the questions?
I believe so.
Okay, very good. We will go on to Kathy Lee, followed by Brooke. Is it Co.?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight. I didn't get a chance to write a formal response. I have a bunch of notes, so I'm just going to read my notes. I was looking at this attachment, the zoo fundraising report dated January 2025, and that's really what I'm going to speak to. Some people really aren't good at finance or financing. I spent 25 years doing budgets for the county of Sacramento, so I pretty much understand how the budget process works. It can be very confusing and complicated, and some people just aren't really good at finance. Some people can't bounce a checkbook, or they don't understand how to finance a car or a home. Some people don't get their taxes paid on time, but whatever it is, some people just aren't good at it. And I don't really expect all of you to know everything about everything that shows up on the agenda. There's just no way that you guys have the breadth and knowledge of everything we ask you to vote on. But when you don't know, you really should hire an expert, and that will lend some credibility to the process and give you the additional knowledge that you need to make sure that we make sound financial decisions on this zoo. Looking over this document, the form itself doesn't say who filled it out, doesn't give you contact information, there's no totals on it, there's no one accepting responsibility for these numbers. It's just a wholly inadequate document for how much money we're talking about. You could drive a truck through this document. I've been over it a couple of times, and it doesn't make sense. These numbers don't add up. It just doesn't. I think we need an independent CPA firm that, the first of every year, they do a year-end review from the year before, they provide you a document that's not an anonymous spreadsheet that doesn't have any documentation or supporting reports attached. We really must ensure that the financial stability and integrity of this agreement, or we're going to have a situation where the zoo's going to come back and say, "We couldn't raise all of our money," and we're stuck with the additional money as citizens. Because, I can't figure out this report. I'm sorry, I just can't figure it out. So, in addition, with, oh shoot, with the executive director and our own finance director leaving, it's like someone's dropped the ball here. We don't have anybody watching the store. So I really think, I'm asking for you guys to get some expert knowledge in finance before you make any more financial decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Next up is Brooke Coe.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Brooke Coe, and I'm the Education Program Manager at the Sacramento Zoo. I've been working at the zoo for 17 years as an educator, doing camps, classes, preschool, scout days, homeschool, all kinds of it, everything, pretty much. But I have also been an Elk Grove resident for the last 15 years, and I'm raising my family here. My oldest daughter is going to start Harriet Eddy Middle School in the fall. So as a zoo employee, as and an Elk Grove resident, I am extremely thrilled that this project continues to move forward. I am very excited for the new zoo in Elk Grove for a number of reasons. One, because I live here, and it would be a closer commute for me, which is great, not that it's far now, but you know, Elk Grove is great. But also because, as an educator, I look forward to really creating excellent partnerships with Elk Grove Unified and Elk Grove Community. I love the new name, and I am super excited about how it incorporates the entire region. Running so many programs at the zoo, I see people who come all the way from Reno and Modesto to the Sacramento Zoo, so having this new site is really going to be an excellent destination for the Greater Sacramento region. So I encourage you to approve the name and continue the process for the new zoo in Elk Grove. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. I believe that is our final speaker, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and open it up for questions, comments, and follow-up. We'll start to the left this time.
All right.
Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification, pledges are allowed, right? Is that what we said earlier? Okay, thank you.
Let me clarify. So there's various milestones in the funding agreement. There was one last May, there's one January, there's another one coming up this May. Through that process, the obligation is that they submit pledges to us that show either cash in hand or pledges, and we have to verify that those pledges are accurate. And so we send staff up there, verify that. When they receive cash, they remit that cash to us as it goes, and we've received $1.9 million in cash to date. Before we go to construction on the zoo, in any capacity, we need to have the full $50 million cash in deposit in our bank account before we go to construction. Until we go to construction, pledges and/or a combination of cash are sufficient. That's what the funding agreement says.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I'd love to see the progress, the drawings coming along. I heard you say 30% design and beginning construction in 2027. Is that just on the offsites, or offsites and onsites?
It would be for both in 2027.
For both. Oh, that's fantastic. Okay, very excited to hear that. I have to ask about the naming convention, because I...
Actually, I feel like we should have probably started off the conversation as such committee members. You know what, I'm going to take that from you right now.
Okay.
If you don't mind, so we can explain.
Yes. Well, all right, go ahead, yes.
So, there was a very robust committee, not just, that included public relations experts, the zoological society, city staff, and then, of course, both of us. We were presented with seven, 10? I'm seeing 10, yeah, a lot of options. This is the only one that actually received a unanimous support. The others weren't even, and say, I would say even half. And I don't want to give you a sampling, because I didn't write them down, but they were, some were aspirational, you know, but we're just, that's, we're Elk Grove, it's Sacramento. The name, having Sacramento Zoo, was very important, I think, for a lot of people, and then, of course, our city. So we did not want to separate the two. When it comes to fundraising and something that's been around for, you know, 100 years, there is, of course, the nostalgic impact for that. But then, and greater plays up, like they showed on the slide, it's not only bigger, but it's greater, it's better. It's a great civic amenity for the region, not just the city of Elk Grove. So we tried to encapsulate sort of all of those things, and then Elk Grove was a nonstarter, obviously. As mayor and then our councilmember Rod Brewer, we wanted to make sure that, obviously, the name Elk Grove was well-represented. So what you see is a result of a lot of discussions back and forth, but this is the one name, I will say, had unanimous support, and how many were in our group? Gosh, there was 15, 20, maybe 20 people, it was a big group. So when you think of 10 names, 20 people, trying to come back to something that everybody supported, I was, you know, I was actually pleasantly surprised when we all put forth, you know, what are our top two? The top two were pretty much in sync too, between, I would say, top three, but between two and three, you still had a gap of probably four to five that just, you know, they weren't supportive. So the fact that this had unanimous support, it captured what the hopes were for the zoological society, what we think in terms of public relations, and then, of course, now we get to, if we move forward with this name, it really does help kick off that fundraising drive. Once you have an actual name for a project, it also helps. I don't want to necessarily go over all of those names. What I want to avoid is what happened, I think, with District 56, when you commit something to death and keep hiring and spending money and then come back to something very simple. This is something that I think has been vetted by professionals that are in the, you know, with the public relations firm, that brought us some great names. But some of the other names were just, really just beyond who we are. They're just too big, and it's not, we're not the San Diego Zoo, this encapsulates sort of who we are and what we want to be. So, I don't know, Councilmember Brewer, what else would you like to add to that?
I think you said it concisely and correctly, yeah. When we went through the process, we had, of the names that were out there, you had some that were, that definitely sounded like we were having an amusement park, and that's not what we wanted to do. You had some that were, they were missing the mark in what we were looking at, especially from a tourist standpoint, where you're coming to Sacramento, there's a number of attractions that bring you to Sacramento, and for a lot of those folks who have that nostalgia of the Sacramento Zoo, but now they've heard and seen that the zoo is bigger, more attractions, especially given that the footprint right now is 14.7 acres. So, that also played into the picture as well, the imagery is, when you're coming to Sacramento, you have stuff you want to do, you know the Sacramento Zoo is still here, but it's in a bigger facility, it's in Elk Grove, and so it was one of the naming processes where people, as we made things very grand, it was nice and concise. It was the simplicity that made this decision work for everyone. And I think that's what really brought this name to the forefront, more than the other recommendations. And it's, in a lot of ways, it's fitting that the Greater Sacramento Zoo in Elk Grove ended up being that key name, because it embraces everything about the Sacramento region, but it also embraces Elk Grove as well.
So I definitely appreciate that, having gone through the District 56 naming process and such.
Sorry to bring that up.
Yeah, no, it was, you know, it is what it is. Same thing, the marketing thing. But I just have to ask, so, I think I know the answer, but I still need to ask, is the same play on words, the Elk Grove Zoo of Greater Sacramento, was that bounced at all?
No.
It wasn't talked about?
Not in that way.
Not in that way, but it was interesting. One of the names that were in the, that was up there on the board for consideration was the Elk Grove Zoo of the Greater Sacramento Region, and that was just too long.
It just, it sounded awkward.
I know, but Elk Grove Zoo of Greater Sacramento is the same play on words.
But the other alternative was Elk Grove's Animal Kingdom.
I know, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, we don't want to go over the whole list because...
I'm keeping with exactly what you proposed, but I'm just switching...
I understand, I mean, trust me, as mayor, we want our name front and center, but this is where we really had to step back a little bit and say, and then look at just the big picture. We're in Sacramento County.
Greater Sacramento.
We're in the county. We even, I mean, we even consider something like, you know, the San Francisco 49ers, and where they're, but they're still San Francisco. There was zero interest, obviously, in just having this be the Sacramento Zoo. That was a nonstarter. And the good news is that was actually never offered up. But what was important was both names, whether they're, you know, what's first versus second. We can have that discussion, but I think from a holistic perspective, the name just sort of flowed. If you want to, others that were in the committee, I mean, this is not, this should not be just, you know, this is not just Rod and I, but others.
Yeah, I mean, I would ask, since it wasn't brought up, I would ask for consideration because a couple of things. First of all, I totally appreciate the nostalgia of the Sacramento Zoo. I, born and raised in Sacramento, you know, longtime Sacramento family history, took my kids all going to Sacramento Zoo, same thing, very much. So, but here we are, we're relocating it to Elk Grove, we're making a massive, massive investment in the city of Elk Grove, land that we acquired, that we are fundraising for, that we are, you know, taking this mantle on to build a new zoo, expand on it, continue the tradition of the Sacramento Zoo. Having it, say, Elk Grove Zoo in Greater Sacramento is very similar to Sacramento Zoo of Greater, or Greater Sacramento Zoo in Elk Grove. Now, the other thing I would point out is, 50 years from now, nobody is going, very few people are going to remember the nostalgia we're talking about that Sacramento is, you know, our grandkids and great-grandkids, they will only know the zoo that is in Elk Grove. And that's why I just submit for consideration that having Elk Grove Zoo of Greater Sacramento offers a lot of the same things that the committee was looking for, but it's appropriate because it literally is in Elk Grove. And if we want to keep putting our city on the map, I feel like that should be a proud moment, and it is very accurate to say Elk Grove Zoo of Greater Sacramento. And we could even put more, you know, whether it's a plaque or a note or something that talks about the Sacramento Zoo, right, in front, right, front and center, so people can see what, you know, the history and how it got there. So, and I really appreciate all the hard work, because I know it's really hard to do the naming, and...
It was a fun discussion, I will say. There was, we were there for a while.
I agree, I hear you. And like I said, that particular name wasn't, sounded, wasn't actually considered, so I offer that up now to...
I don't know that it was considered in that quite way. I don't, and if someone has that list, where it was...
We can show the list. I think one of the other things I think is important, the people that were around the table, was from the fundraising perspective.
The fundraising.
What name, what, you know, as the zoological society and the city are going out to bring in naming sponsors and other people that want to contribute to the zoo, what name is going to resonate most to bring in the dollars necessary to construct the zoo? So that was part of the discussion, and we had people in the room that were kind of looking at it from that perspective. And I don't know, this name wasn't considered, so I don't know whether this would change that at all in that perspective, but that was another lens that we viewed the name through.
Yeah.
Did you want to see, I don't, do you actually have all of the names?
Yes, I did.
You can see, yeah, so these were...
I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I...
No, I hear you.
If you don't have the name right now, I mean, I would ask...
Well, we kind of do because of fundraising.
Oh.
It does matter to have a name, and I've been told that by the entire fundraising team, particularly our fundraising guru, that having the name, it helps with all of the collateral, the marketing, everything that's going to go forward.
So can we bounce this off and bring it back next meeting for a consent item or something? If that's the case.
Okay, let me just take just one moment. So, in the conversation, there was kind of two names that rose to the top. One was the Greater Sacramento Zoo at Elk Grove, which ultimately is the recommendation. And then another name was the Golden State Zoo at Elk Grove. Here is a listing of all the names, kind of in the different categories. You'll see the red names are, were the top two names. I'm going to let you just kind of read those, I won't read them all aloud, but...
Yeah, I mean, I...
These, so, you know, like I said, those two that you see in red... one had unanimous support, the other had decent support. But when it comes to anything beyond that, there was really no rallying around anything. And we did look at creative, you know, I think we talked even about, I don't know about this combination, but people were just offering up also just other names. But this is, this is not an easy thing because this is going to be here forever.
Absolutely. I mean, that, that, it is, we'll be here forever.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We're putting Elk Grove on the map, right? I mean, and, and we are, we are relocating the Sacramento Zoo. We are making sure it stays around. I, 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 I think even from a fundraising perspective, the, I'll call it just accurate geography, the Elk Grove Zoo at Greater Sacramento, I think would still be a good fundraising effort. Everybody knows.
What I will say is, let's bring up somebody from the Sacramento Zoological Socii, oh, I see Liz already. To help us, because this was, trust, you know, it was hard. This was hard.
I believe you, I do, I understand.
But fundraising, of course, being a critical path to getting to achieving all of this is key.
And, and first, let me say, I, I so appreciate that you all are so invested in coming up with the right name for the zoo. It just shows how much we all care about getting it right.
Yeah.
I, I think it's important, just in, in all kind of generally answer the, the questions or the concerns you've raised. With respect to fundraising, with respect to kind of identity and continuity, to help us continue to, to one draw on our existing donor base, as well as to motivate people in this region to support our, our significant fundraising obligations over the next few years, it really, it, on our side, with respect to the society and the fundraising team, we really believe it has to be Sacramento Zoo at Elk Grove. There, I think there's also some concerns we discussed in the committee about as people from outside of the local region are orienting themselves and trying to figure out, you know, is this an attraction I want to come see? And where is it that they're going to look? And, and that's why some of these names that weren't as geographically specific fell off, because we want people to be able to go, oh, Sacramento Zoo, I'm heading to the Sacramento area, I know where that zoo is. Oh, it's in Elk Grove, great. You know, where's, for people outside of the region who may not know where Elk Grove is, right over the, you know, that period, that also matters. I think we also believed, and, you know, as someone, we, we are very proud of the nearly hundred-year history of the Sacramento Zoo. And certainly, you know, biased as the president of the Sacramento Zoological Society, it, it was really something that, that on the society side, we think really matters, to show that continuity of the commitment to this community. And the reality is, most people are going to call it the Sacramento Zoo. And so we want to embrace that, but also then point them to see, we're in Elk Grove, right? And to recognize the, that we wouldn't be doing this without Elk Grove, right? And it's so important to us that Elk Grove be part of the name. I don't know if that helps at all.
No, because, because I, I don't know that I agree that most people are going to call it the Sacramento Zoo. If you'd call it the Elk Grove Zoo at Greater Sacramento, how about people who relocate here from another city? How about the city of Anaheim, before they had Anaheim Stadium? Were they just that city that was LA that had Disneyland in it? These, these things take time. And if we are forever, you know, if we want to actually make our own identity, something as huge as this, think about this, folks, this is the largest capital project that this city has ever embarked on. It is on the scale of Golden One Center Arena in the city of Elk Grove, right? And we are going to name it after our sister, which our beloved city of Sacramento, which I, I loved here, I grew up there, again, a hundred-year history, my family there. So it's not, nothing against Sacramento, I'm just saying, we're, we, the city of Elk Grove are, are investing all that, and yet we're gonna, we're gonna give our name away and call it the Sacramento Zoo at Elk Grove? And then even the, even the graphic, I'm, sorry Kara, but I saw the graphic. It was a big old, you know, Greater Sacramento Zoo, and then tiny little Elk Grove on the bottom. I, I just think we are making huge investments of resources and capital costs and efforts to help fundraise. Unless you tell me the Sacramento City Council, I love all of them dearly, are they going to be helping us fundraise for this as well? Because if the city of Sacramento is not putting up resources to, and I, and I, I just use this thing as a comparison. I'm not slanning them at all. I'm just saying, we're putting all this money up and we're giving away our naming rights. Our naming rights, that's what we're, we're doing, we're putting. So I just, I want to give a nod to, to the Sacramento Zoo and the Greater Sacramento Region because everybody is going to come here. I just don't understand why having Elk Grove Zoo of Greater Sacramento is so different than Sacramento Zoo of, of Great, of, of Greater Sacramento Zoo of Elk Grove. I, I don't, I don't know why that would make such a big difference from a fund, fund, uh, raising perspective.
Well, I would say it does, it does have a continuity issue with respect to our fundraising, that we do have people who have supported the Sacramento Zoo, in some cases, generations through their family, who live all over this region already. And so the fact that it's called the Sacramento Zoo hasn't impacted their support. We do have concerns about shifting the name. The Elk Grove Zoo in Greater Sacramento doesn't, isn't really a nod to the Sacramento Zoo. It breaks the continuity of the Sacramento Zoo. That, that, that I think would be, it's different in that way. When you flip it, it isn't the same. But I guess I would just say, it, it isn't to, for the, with respect to the society, the, the fundraising consultants, all the people we talked to, it's not so much about the city of Sacramento. We are in Sacramento County, and, and the Sacramento Zoo is an institution with a hundred-year legacy of supporting the community. And so we believe those values mattered in terms of, of keeping the name. I, you know, obviously, there, you saw, there are so many other names, and, and we, we had a very spirited discussion and walked through a lot of these topics. But I think there, I think we, we believe that the name and that we worked through in this process is the right name. So the graphics are separate. We didn't approve those or, or make a deal on graphics.
So I think to Councilmember Sue's point, and this is why discussion is always good. I hear what you're saying. And here, so, I'm not saying that I've changed my mind per se, but what I am saying, this is a, this is the largest commitment in our city. Nobody else is part of, you know, there's the fundraising, but that, most of the money is coming from our city, our residents. So I, I completely understand where you're coming from. I don't know, yeah, I, I, I don't know that I am now, you've convinced me a lot right now. I don't necessarily want to start over because I, you know, we, we need to, we need to raise money. We have deadlines.
Agreed.
You tell me why we need to have a name right now.
Well, I don't think right now.
Okay.
I think we, we do believe that it needs to be resolved because we have fundraising deadlines that you're all expecting us to meet, and this is a challenge for us, not having a name identified. I will also say, if you shift the name around and it becomes too amorphous, you're also creating a fundraising challenge for us. I don't know what the final name, but you, you just need to be mindful of how the naming can impact our fundraising efforts. I, I don't think it has to be right now, but obviously, if there's a desire to take more time, I think you should do that because it's an important decision. I just think it, it needs to move relatively quickly.
Well, I would love to hear from my other colleagues. What I think is important is knowing that we have options. And that is, it doesn't have to be tonight. However, I don't know, like I said, I don't, I think I know where Rod is because we were on the subcommittee. But I myself feel a little bit on pause right now, based on the passionate plea that you made, which is very valid and strong. But I'm also mindful of where we need to go, where we need to be, so that we can have a zoo. So those are, those are important too.
I totally appreciate that, Mayor, and, and I thank you for, for the consideration. I, I would, if we can, you know, since we don't have it today, can we, let's just shop that one.
Let's see where we are, let's see where we, let's see where we all are. But I will just put myself on pause for now. I, I understand what you're saying, but I also, the process that we had, I don't know that what kind of name would, we would come out with, if, if not your version or some other version. I'm not sure where, where we would necessarily land that would make everyone happy. Someone inevitably is going to be unhappy, period, right? Branding is important, so that's where, you know, when we had the PR folks come, they were helpful in this process. And so having a subcommittee is part of that process as well. So do I want to start all over? Personally, I don't want to start all over. However, if, you know, let, well, let's just see where we all land. But I see the value of both, of, both of the arguments of where we came together as a subcommittee. We're not going to have a zoo without the funding, period, right? So that's important to me. Now, I would love to hear maybe even from our fund, is our fundraising guru here?
Our, our outside consultants are not here this evening, no.
They're not, okay, because I, I would be curious to, you know, as we raise money, where, how is that going to factor in?
To be honest, we, because of the conversation and the expectation that we had resolved the naming issue, we, we didn't anticipate that you would want to hear addition, you know, additional discussion of.
Well, no, you, you haven't met Elk Grove City Council. This happens.
And certainly, you know, there, of the three hundred million, I just want to encourage you to remember too, there's fifty million coming from our fundraising community, there's another thirty million that we're raising from third parties, and there's also a significant repayment obligation on the bonds that the society will be fulfilling. And so we are very significant partners in this as well. We obviously couldn't be doing this without you, but we are partners, and we want to make sure everybody is as happy as they can be, right, with, with every piece of this.
Appreciate that, Liz. And, and look, I, we also learned through the District 56 process that names, whatever name you choose, will adopt, you know, people, they'll, they'll, they'll adopt it because that's what it's called in, in the future.
Once we name it, it's named.
Once we name, and, and so from a fundraising perspective, I mean, I know people won't, may not like the name, but I personally am suspicious that somebody is going to, who is passionate about the zoo, there's that passion, they're writing, you know, seven-figure checks or whatever, five-figure checks. They are not going to shy away because two words are switched around and therefore not like the zoo. That's hard for me to believe. I mean, so, I, I know you might feel differently, but I, I'm just saying, if, if that, if no zoo is the alternative to a zoo with two words swapped around and greater geographical accuracy, I would say. I mean, I think that, that would, they would still, they would still contribute. Or, I mean, how hard are we selling it, you know? I mean, that, that's the other thing, so, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, I.
I know, you want to speak.
No, 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 I appreciate you giving.
Do you have anything, otherwise I'm going to go down the.
I just wanted to reference that one of the things that we will be doing in order to support our fundraising obligation is looking for sponsorships from nationwide entities, right, that want to have a presence in this area. Sacramento will be more meaningful to those entities that are outside of the region and therefore want to be able to say, we're in the state capital region. That, that is a name, a, a, a name draw that matters for people who are outside of the community. That's an example of some of the, the thinking behind it. Is it exclusive? No, there are people here, and we all know where Elk Grove is, but I think that's part of the balance as well because some of the significant fundraising will come in the form of sponsorships, multi-year kind of naming rights, and those are likely to come from entities outside of the region for whom Sacramento will, will be more meaningful than Elk Grove.
So is it because of the geographic, or is it because this is the, one of the fir, the first zoo in the world that they are doing? And would they have done it for any new zoo in the world in a different city, let's say? If you're talking about you're reaching out out of the region, they may have some idea of where Sacramento is, but my, my hunch is they're investing because they believe a new zoo is being built in the world. And if that's the case, it's almost, it could be, I mean, again, uh, well, anyway, I'm not going to pick any different city, but it could be any city USA. And a new zoo with the, with the top-notch, you know, practices, facilities, if that type of donor is investing in a zoo that is not within their region, they're looking at what they're investing in, not necessarily because they have heard of Sacramento or Elk Grove or whatever city, right? I would, I would hope, if they're writing this check, go ahead.
Not necessarily, but I also think if that, if the, depending on what the council believes, if those are questions, then they're probably better answered by, I mean, we, we can have a more robust discussion about that if people are undecided about the current name. But generally speaking, I think when you find that, you know, generally corporations who are investing in, in the zoo project, it's less necessarily because they are excited about our facilities and more because they're thinking, this is a big draw for people and families, and we want our name in front of people, and so they'll look at the re, they'll look at the region. I don't even know if we, if we can, we can say that they're saying because we love zoos, right? They're, they're looking at for marketing purposes and being located near the Capitol. And so that, those are the things that we are at least understanding matter. But again, I'm, I'm speaking very generally, and so I.
Yeah, but you said all of that without using the name of the city. That's my point. That you, you, you did all of that without using a name of any city.
I think what, what Councilman Sue is trying to say is, you don't have to utilize the name of the city when doing the fundraising. It can be the, the Greater Sacramento Zoo, right? But it's still, we want to put Elk Grove in the front as when it comes to signage.
So do you want to, you want to, are you done? So that we can go on, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead. Thank you, Mayor, no, no.
But come back for more questions or comments. This is a very, this, we haven't, we haven't spoken this passionately on, on, on a single subject in a while, so this is very good. And ultimately, everyone will benefit from this process. Because it, you know, we have to take it out to the community as well. And we're also here to help you.
And, and again, and we may, I may not have, I certainly don't have all the information. And I think if there are questions, that's why I was saying, I think maybe, I, I'm not the person to answer some of those.
Okay, no, that's fair, but let's go, let's go down the road, and let's, let's hear from our vice mayor.
I believe the best thing would probably be to push it out, at least for the next meeting. Because Councilman Sue, what you said, you articulated that in the best way, and I think that's correct.
Okay, so you feel a new name?
Well, I want to say with, with what he said, in addition to like Elk Grove, right?
You want Elk Grove first?
I'm just saying Elk Grove Zoo at Greater Sacramento. I just switched two words in the name that you, that was put forth.
And I understand the fundraising aspect. When it comes to fundraising, you don't necessarily have to say the first part, right? You can say, hey, the Greater Sacramento Zoo. So, but we're talking about the naming of it as far as, at least what I'm thinking, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, as far as what the zoo is going to say from the outside walking in, right? You can still do the fundraising, you can drop, you know, the city of Elk Grove, but you can say the last part that you want to say. At least that's the way I'm thinking, right? So if I'm doing fundraising, I'm going to fundraise for the, for the zoo. I'm going to say the Sacramento Zoo. Obviously, it's in Elk Grove. It's just the name is going to be different when you're walking in.
I mean, I guess conceivably, conceivably, there could be some multi-billionaire that wants to name the zoo, period. That can still happen too, by the way.
And if that happens, we don't have to meet anymore as a committee.
So I'm just throwing it out there, like, you know, you've got the Golden One Arena. I mean, conceivably, things can happen. I'm just saying.
Right.
More, more seriously, our expectation was that whatever the name of the zoo would be, that if there were a, a sponsor who wanted to have naming rights over the zoo and working with the city, that, you know, it could be, you know, the, the Allen Family Zoo at.
With my five dollars, no.
That we would, we would find room to put the name for a significant donor that would like to support the project.
Right, right.
I'm, I'm, if, if, well, we can let everybody know.
So we'll come back to you, Councilmember Brewer, because you've chimed in a bit, but I'd love to hear from Councilmember Spies.
Okay, so on the subject in general, I do want to put a punctuation point one more time in that pledges are acceptable, cash is acceptable, but before a shovel is turned on site, there will be cash in hand. Correct? Correct?
Yeah.
We all got it? Bingo. All right. So, my blood pressure comes down. All right. So, the, um, okay, so on the naming, no, no ill intent or no, no insult towards Sacramento, but I think it also has to be recognized in marketing, particularly outside of the area. Sacramento itself doesn't always have the best name either, right? So it, people have, people outside of the state and even within the state have challenges with Sacramento. So I don't know that, I'm certainly not beholden to using Sacramento in its current place, right? All right, so two things, no matter what happens, whatever name you have, the longer it is, it will be concatenated. Okay, and so if you have whatever the first suggestion was, what was it?
The Greater Sacramento Zoo at Elk Grove.
If you have that, people will concatenate it to Sacramento Zoo. That will happen. District 56, I call it D-56. I actually call it D-50 Tricks. That's what I call it to my friends. Doco, you know, downtown commons became Doco, right? So I, I, I'm concerned about the length of the name, particularly as people will then concatenate it. So with that then, I also want to, and with all deference, appreciation that this is absolutely a partnership with the Sacramento Zoological Society as well as other organizations through the Sacramento Valley. The single largest donor to this project is the Elk Grove Tax-Paying Homo Sapient. And we need to make sure that their name is accurately reflected in that. So I can support delaying. So I can support delaying to have further conversation, or I could support, um, Councilmember Sue's recommendation to change it to Elk Grove Zoo at, or in Greater Sacramento. But, um, I, I really appreciate your opinion relative to that, Darren. I think you said it better than I could. I couldn't figure out what was bothering me about it. I knew I didn't like it because there's pride, right? I mean, it's a, it's a big deal and it's a big price tag. Again, with, with much respect to partners, this is, um, the biggest donors, Elk Grove taxpayers. So.
Good point.
That's where I'm at with it. Um, either I can support, oh, but you had one more. Uh, why don't you go ahead and, you want me to throw that, you were saying, throw it out? Or you had it?
I had one too.
Okay.
Go forward, you say it.
Um, it was Elk Grove Zoo in Sa-, in Sacramento Valley?
Of Sacramento.
Or of Sacramento Valley?
Instead of the Greater.
Right. Of Greater Sacramento. So I guess what I'm saying is, I mean, there, there are still some good ideas here. I don't have to put a pin in Elk Grove Zoo. Um, and so I can either go with Elk Grove Zoo or support a, a, a different conversation. A off, not an off-line conversation, further conversation, right?
So this is what I think I will offer up. I think staff has an idea of where the passions are. And know that those passions were communicated, um, in the subcommittee. We actually wanted, Rod, you know, we did want our name front and center. But I, at the time, we had, you know, the, we had consultants in the room and others in the room. So I think it begs a conversation, um, to continue this with, you know, with fundraising. I don't know what you, you know, what you might need to put as a placeholder of anything. Um, but we want to do this right because you don't get to do this naming all the time. And it is important to factor in what we heard this evening from council colleagues and how passionate I think everybody is. We love our city. But most importantly, this is a very, very big, largest investment from the city of Elk Grove. And so just another, a further conversation, taking in accordance of sort of, you know, what we heard this evening. Would your preference, Jason, be setting up another ad hoc meeting? Or do, do we want to do this in a more smaller group?
I think, I think we.
But we want to get to resolution relatively quickly. And our next meeting's not until February 12th.
Yeah, well, I think we got, we have direction from council. I think they're, you know, council's interested in exploring the name with, um, Elk Grove Zoo at the front. I think there's probably some permutations surrounding that that we can explore a little bit. We can have some further conversations with the Zoological Society and we can, we can bring this back to you. Uh, I know there's, timing is important, so I think the sooner we make a decision on this, the better. There are some deadlines coming up with their fundraising obligations.
We need to extend those deadlines a few weeks to factor, why, what I don't want to, what I don't want to do is be an obstacle.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
For, for anything. So if we need to adjust things by a month, I'm good with that. But I, I want to do this right. And I don't want, again, this to be any catalyst for, well, we couldn't move forward and therefore, you know, we didn't get to this, the, the amount that we needed because we didn't have those critical three weeks. So I, I would rather move that around a little bit, if needed, to factor in that, because the name is important, obviously, um, to everybody here.
We can't, we can't just move the, the deadlines around. There's funding agreements in place.
No, yes.
So my preference would be that, that we have some conversations and we schedule this as quickly as, as we can. So whether that's the next meeting or the meeting after that, um, I think, I think we get something.
I think the next meeting is good.
Yeah.
So we have some options. I'd say we come back with three options.
Yeah.
Um, and then we can share those options. We, so Rod and I can be available since we're on the subcommittee with whomever immediately and try to get to someplace.
We'll circle with our, um, our partners, Zoological Society, and see if they have any input on, on that as well. So we can come back with some options that, um, addresses the council's intent and that we think we can use for fundraising and other, other, other things. So, yeah. I think we have the direction we need.
Okay. So this is a partnership. We're, we're in this to see this all the way through and we're here to help you. But of course, we want to make sure that we get the name right. So thank you, um, for your passion there, Councilmember Sue.
Thank you.
And everybody else. But thank you specifically. Sorry, media. We don't have a name to share with you just yet. But it's coming. You can do the fundraising plug on the media.
Love you, Sacramento too. Love you, Sacramento too.
All right. So with that, we, we have direction on, we're going to come back with some options at the next meeting. All right. So we don't have anything, um, to vote on right now, so we will move on. Let's move on to our next item.
That'll be item 9.3, to receive an update on city council priority projects and provide direction as desired.
Good evening once again, Mayor and Council. I'm Femi Omotesho. And, um, this report is an update on city council priority projects and for council to provide direction as desired. At the council's retreat on March 10, 2023, some projects were identified as high priority to ensure the successful implementation of the adopted mission, vision, and goals. This presentation is one of the biannual staff reports on the progress of implementing these priority projects. Please note that the city's goals focus on fostering a vibrant and sustainable community with a resilient economy, a safe environment, and a high-performing government, and infrastructures that support current and future needs. Of the 30 deemed, yeah, 30 projects deemed as high priority, um, presenting some highlighted accomplishments. And this update covers the period through December 2024. The first one is the Elk Grove Library relocation. Construction, um, contract was awarded for the new Elk Grove Library, including enhanced spaces for children and teens. Construction is anticipated to begin in spring 2025 with a possible opening in spring or summer 2026. The next highlighted, um, I come, accomplishment is the Laguna Creek Trail Overcrossing. Advanced planning has been approved and the environmental, um, document is currently under review by Caltrans. A sum of 10.65 million in grant funding has been secured for this project. And the next is the Climate Action Plan. Greenhouse gas inventory and fo-, and forecast has been completed. Um, draft strategies and actions developed. And staff is currently working on cost analysis and public engagement. The fourth is addressing homelessness in Elk Grove. Two homeless, um, service navigators, navigator positions have been filled. A 24/7 homeless shelter operational with 30 beds, including five emergency, uh, five additional emergency beds for Elk Grove PD's youth. Staff continues to explore further solutions to addressing homelessness. And the last one is, um, road maintenance. A sum of 2.05 million in Measure E funds was allocated for pavement, uh, maintenance. The Laguna Beliva to Big Horn Repavement Project is currently all underway. Our Public Works, um, inspector was hired to manage the projects. Staff is currently developing a comprehensive pavement, uh, maintenance strategy. This is the end of, um, the highlighted accomplishment. I'll just want to, um, underscore the fact that, um, the city council retreat is planned for Thursday, February 20, 2025, where the current mission, vision, goals, and priority projects will be reviewed. Thank you. Any questions?
All right. Well, thank you for your report. I'm going to open up public comment. I do not have anyone signed up to speak. I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Any questions, comments, directions? I'll start to the right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. Femi, thank you very much for the update. I appreciate it. A lot of good work out there. I'm really glad to see that we've obviously got the, the shelter up and running. And, uh, I think it's, I think it's doing good things. I, I don't know if it's the crummy weather later, late, lately, um, but I'll tell you, I, I, it, I seem to, when I drive around recently, it appears there are, there are less homeless on the street. Um, I, I, then that's just purely from, you know, unscientific, um, review, but I'm, I'm really glad to see that. I think we're working in the right direction, particularly, um, you know, with new legislation that helps us. And, um, and, and thank you again on the update on the, uh, overpass. Um, I think, I think that's going to be a very beautiful thing that, um, particularly District 3, um, folks can be looking forward to in the next couple of years. So thank you, Dr. Femi.
Councilmember Brewer?
I concur with, uh, Councilmember Spees's, um, uh, assessment and his remarks. And I definitely want to thank Dr. Femi for the summary. Uh, I, I like what I'm seeing, um, specifically with the progress that we're doing, um, with the library and with Railroad Street. But, uh, and also looking at, uh, the Cameron Road Corridor Urban Design Study Implementation and the update for the Old Town Special Planning Area. Those things are, are very important for me as, because, uh, the, because those two things, they're going to really help in terms of the, of the growth and the revitalization for, um, those corridors of District 2, um, especially, uh, the, the Old Town Special Planning Area part. Because, um, folks are asking, when is, when are we going to address, um, the update for the SPA for Old Town? And I think, uh, it looks like we're, we're 75% there. And I think that's, uh, that's a good progress. But looking forward to those further discussions as we have something that we can talk to the neighbors about, um, as we get towards try, uh, ratifying it. And so a lot of good, um, a lot of good things to share in here. Uh, looking at the light rail extension, uh, the passenger intercity rail service projects as well. Uh, light rail extension, obviously at 25%, but there's the, the bus rapid transit that could stand in for a temporary basis until that gets done. And that still provides, um, much-needed, uh, resources, especially for, as the kids are coming to and from Fortune School. Uh, they're having to walk up to Whitelock Road, um, over to, um, Kasuma's Oaks or to Pinkerton Middle School to catch the RT. But as they make that walk, it's very dangerous as the, as some of them find themselves walking on the street and on the sidewalk. And so looking at ways to help mitigate any sort of danger in that is, is very important for, for me as well. But on the whole, this is, this is very promising in terms of priorities. I want to thank you for, for sharing this update with us and very appreciative and looking forward to engaging on February 20.
Uh, Councilmember Sue.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Femi, for this presentation. We talked about the shiny thing earlier, but these are really important things. So I'm really glad to see our, our trail moving along and, and as Councilmember Spees and Brewer mentioned about the, um, the homeless shelter being up and running critically important, uh, for our city as well. So this is, this is very good news. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Femi, just for your hard work on this and for updating us. Um, looking forward, uh, next week to helping out, um, at the homeless shelter and providing food and then looking forward for the retreat. So thank you.
Thank you. Another excellent report. Thank you for the update. I don't have anything further to add than what my colleagues already have. So thank you. And you get to stay right up there for the next update.
And that'll be item 9.4, which is receive information on regional planning commissioners stipends.
Okay. I remain Femi Omotesho. This session is to provide information on the regional planning commissioner stipend and for the council to provide direction as needed. At the December 11, 2024 city council meeting, council members peace, uh, requested a review of the current monthly stipend for planning commissioners, which was supported by the mayor and other council members. This is an informational report in response to that request. A detailed review of, uh, planning commissioner compensation in 11 neighboring cities was completed by staff. Um, presented here are the findings. Currently, Elk Grove Planning Commissioners receive a sum of $75 stipend per meeting. As we can see up here, um, some jurisdiction do not, some jurisdictions do not provide their planning commissioners any stipend, while the highest sum paid by any is the sum of $150 per meeting. I'd like to know that an update was provided on the frequency of stipend for the city of Rockland to reflect a monthly average of two meetings per month. And, uh, coincidentally, they have the highest of 150, uh, per meeting. The compensation survey identified an average meeting stipend of $57.92. And, um, of the jurisdictions surveyed, no jurisdiction indicated they had any planned increase. So I'll leave this, um, slide up for you to review. And I'm available for any questions you might have in this regard.
All right. Thank you, um, for doing the research and getting us back this, uh, information as it relates to our planning commissioners. I know there's been some interest in this. I will go ahead and open up public comment. I don't have anyone signed up. I'll start to our former planning commissioner.
Uh, yeah. Well, and I, and I did, I did bring this one up, but I know that there had been, uh, other conversation as well. Um, but first I want, I want to, um, say that, um, past planning commissioner, George Murphy, after he was off the planning commission, I know he had probably made a request to only one other of you because we certainly wouldn't do Brown Act, but he'd made a request that we take a look at it. And he said that he had thought about it, asking about it before, but he didn't want to ask while he was on planning commission. So, uh, so he had asked, you know, can you take a look at it and see if it's appropriate throughout the, uh, throughout the valley, right? So, um, they've done that. And, um, when I was looking through it, I said, okay, um, if I was, you know, doing back of the napkin math, right, of is this at that 80% or at the 80th percentile, right? Uh, you know, you would throw out the, the, the zero and you'd throw out essentially the $150 per meeting. And you, you basically wind up with that $75 at about the 80th percentile, right? Um, and so, you know, I, I don't, I don't think any significant drastic change is required. I, I think it's okay if we leave it at 75. Um, maybe, you know, at the most, you know, go up another $5 to $80, which in the grand scheme of things is not horribly significant, right? Um, because I think that we're about right with, uh, where we are to the planning commission right now. So, um, that's where I'm at with it. Um, I'm, I'm okay with leaving it as is or a very small increment. So.
Okay. Councilmember Brewer?
I want to thank Dr. Femi for the report. Um, and this, this is, this is very helpful because, uh, as looking, looking at the numbers about everyone is compared on, um, you get a feel for how the other cities are. And for comparisons, looking at, um, how Rockland and Lincoln are measured along with Citrus Heights, uh, it definitely provides for a good measurement of the two. But I'm, I mean, it feels like, especially as, as the city's continuing to grow, it, it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed to, um, increasing the stipend. it, it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed to increasing the stipend to $100 per meeting. I just feel that the work that planning commissioners do is, is definitely something that I've grown to respect, especially from my years on the CSD Board and seeing the work how past commissioners dive into the work, into the research, engaging with all, all the stakeholders and making sure that the decisions that they make are solid recommendations for the city. And, and it holds true today from the original planning commission that Pat was a part of, or Supervisor Hume, to the most past version of the planning commission that, that George Murphy led along with Councilmember Spees, Councilmember Robles. And seeing to the current composition of today's commissioners, I feel that it's, it's a, knowing that they put a lot of hours, many hours into making these very difficult decisions on land use and how, how the community is being shaped before the council makes the vote, I'm, I'm totally comfortable with raising it up to $100 per meeting.
To $100?
Yes, $100.
Well, the way you said it sounded to $100, it sounded like $200.
Almost, almost.
I just want to be clear.
I'm not a complete drunken sailor yet. But $100 per meeting, I'm definitely comfortable with.
So before we go further down the line, are you good with five? Yours is five and yours is 100? You, in terms of?
You mean a five increment?
$5?
If, if, if the will of the council is to go to some other number, I'm happy to go to it. I'm not going to die on my sword on this one. If, if everybody says it's going to be $100,
Okay.
I'm going.
Okay, just checking. Councilmember Suon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I'm totally fine too with adjusting them to just be even, even $100. I mean, again, there's, as our city continues to grow, the more issues, as Councilmember Brewer mentioned it, I agree with what he was saying. They, they do a lot of work. So appreciate it.
Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I agree, $100 and happy to make the motion on that one.
All right, and I to support the $100 increase, so I'm looking for... I don't know that with the motion, we're just giving direction.
Yeah, just give direction, we'll bring it back.
$100.
Increase to $100.
To $100.
Exactly.
It's going from 75 to 100 per meeting.
We're playing war games now.
Pro zero.
You got to be clear.
Okay, very good. We are going to go on to the next item. And council comments, reports, future agenda items. I'll start to the left. Anything to report?
Nothing to report, thank you. I was not able to make the sewer district meeting today.
Did make the sewer district meeting. I am happy to announce that I'm on a new committee. I think it's for econ development for the sewer district, so.
Okay, continuing on, Councilmember Brewer?
Sacramento Public Library Board meets tomorrow at 3 o'clock. And we are going to be at the County Administrative Offices Building. I mean, we've been trying to move it over to the, to the City Hall, but we, we tend to get pulled back to the County Administrative Offices, which is totally fine with me. But yeah, tomorrow at 3 o'clock should be a, a good, strong one-hour meeting, if not 90 minutes.
All right, wait, my report?
All right, I had SacRT along with you as well, Councilmember Brewer. And then in terms of just what's coming up, so we've all seen the horrific fires in Southern California. So that you're aware, I did reach out to CSD, to Dr. Amanda Scheharazad and our fire chief to provide us with an update so that our residents have an opportunity to learn sort of, you know, where we stand, where we are, and do an assessment. So I want to thank the CSD. For protocol purposes, they're going to do a presentation first to the CSD. But I want to thank Jason, and I thought it would be in your report, but I'm just mentioning it, that it's coming up in the next council meeting, I believe, correct? One of the next council meetings. I think it's the next one.
I believe it is the 12th.
Yeah, it's going to be on the 12th. And this is so that we all, you know, I, I'm sure you're all getting questions from residents. And so just being proactive, it's a good opportunity to have a check-in with our, with our fire chief and get an update so that we know what, you know, how we're doing. So, and I, I don't know if there's going to be any coordination, I think, with the police department. I imagine there would be.
Yes, we'll, we'll cover the evacuation.
Correct. Okay, perfect, excellent. So that's, be looking for that. And I did have a question for you, Jason, with our youth that were here. And I meant to ask it then, but I thought about it after I had closed it out. We have some Measure E funding when it comes to youth programs. Are we funding anything that they've identified in their survey? Or is that something that is open for discussion? Or have we already, has Measure E decided what that's going to look like for the youth component of Measure E funds?
That's a good question. Most of the...
I don't need the answer now, but just...
Yeah, Measure E right now, I believe, we have funds for our youth services program that's operated by PD. Most of the other youth programs are operated out of the CSD because they provide most of the youth service programs in Elk Grove. So I don't believe that any of the programs that they've identified are funded out of Measure E, partly because a lot of those programs are continuing programs that we do every year. One of the things we've committed to is we don't supplant existing funding sources. So we've traditionally funded out of general fund, so we continue to do that. And if they came forward with a new budget ask to do some kind of program that took a significant amount of dollars, then Measure E is absolutely an appropriate funding source for that. It would fall within those priorities. Most of the stuff they're proposing to do is either previously funded or a really insignificant amount that we can just cover under existing resources.
Okay, okay, just some coordination with their, with their commission and some of their findings with the survey. And I'm sure the school district as well. Okay. So with that, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 8:30. Have a great evening, everyone.